There he comes.
Where is Christopher?
I see him on here, but not his face, just his name.
Bobby says Andre's not in his office.
He's on our screen.
Okay, great, okay. Let's go ahead and get this ball rolling. We'll start with Andre, you want to do the prayer? Is that too sad for you? We'll just do the Lord's Prayer. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Will be done, will be done, is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses.
Lead us not in the temple.
All right, we'll go ahead and do the pledge. Now, I can stand at home if you want to, but we'll stand here. Our pledge of allegiance to the states of America. Okay, thank you, and this is definitely new experience for all of us. And thank you for your patience. This is kind of learning as we go. Unfortunately, it may become something we all get too familiar with in the next couple of few weeks. At this point, I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Davis?
Thank Columbia.
Here.
Crockett?
Present.
Franklin?
Here.
Epple?
Here.
Ford? Six presents.
Okay, and we also have Chief Smith and Director Mom Jones here with us tonight. The public is not invited. This is unusual because of the virus. So, but we do have a long agenda, and we'll try to get through it the best we can. Thank you again for everybody's patience as we get used to this new technology. It's the next item on the agenda is the minutes. So Ms. Sandy says we'll move those to the next meeting. The treasures report. There's a motion to that. You want to just use mine?
Can you continue?
Yeah.
No, I don't have to. This is the thing we're everything. Pointed today. Operator's going so far. The only thing I'd like to add to Springfield residue is coming in steady with St. Francis County and Fort City.
I can't.
I can't hear either.
I couldn't hear what Derek was saying, no.
No, I can't hear a word.
I'll try.
Could they hear me at first?
At first, and then it went off, yeah.
Okay. But regardless, there's too much going on. I got texts. So get used to. But the only thing about the budget resolution that I was asking about, I don't know if Andre had an opportunity to look at it, but what I'm basically asking you overall, the city was under budget overall. There were a couple of items that were over budget, and like I said at the last council meeting, because we paid two municipal league legal aid payments in the same year, that caused us to go over budget in that area. So I kind of just wanted to move some money from the police department and move it into administration so we could at least, so that line item wouldn't be over budget. But overall, the city is under budget. And basically, I don't know if you have a copy of the resolution, but it's basically asking you to, for any item that was under, that we went over appropriations, we want to move money from items that were under the appropriations, under the budget appropriations. And it also states, I know some people may be concerned that maybe we at the administration, where the mayor, because he has a spending authority, may have gone over his $5,000 limit. And you guys may think that approving the budget, amended budget resolution would give him permission to do that. Approve those expenditures, but the budget resolution states that these appropriations are for a legal purpose. And Andre can give his opinion on it, but the passing of the budget resolution, all I'm asking for is to adjust the appropriations. I'm not asking you to give approval for expenditures that go over the mayor's spending limit. That's not what we're asking. I'm just asking you to change appropriations. So if we did go over the spending limit, and you guys didn't approve it, you passing this budget resolution would not give approval for those expenditures, in case anybody was concerned about that. And so, and this also would cover items that maybe I didn't have a line item for. It could be something small, like some certain fee that we didn't have a budget for, just to move some money around to cover those fees. And so, that's what I'm asking for in a budget resolution. So I'm not asking you to approve anything that had, you know, any expenditures that over the mayor's spending limit. And so, but if you're not, if you need any more information, if you're not ready to pass that resolution, just, you know, think about it and look over, get me in the college if you have any concerns. But we'd like to do it before the auditors leave. I don't think they'll be here but another month. I can't. Yes, yeah, Joe.
I'd like to hear the city attorney's opinion on what you're saying.
Okay.
It doesn't look like he's still in the meeting.
Andre. How can I, how do I expand this? Okay. Do you guys feel okay? You can hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
I'm wondering if you hear me on this phone. Can you?
So did Andre?
I think he left. I sent him a text. I don't know what happened.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
She says he got disconnected. I guess he's trying to get back in.
Well, while we're waiting, let me add, I'm not exactly sure we're doing it, but the radio station is remotely recording, Sandy tells me, the meeting, and I know the hell of, west hell of the world has been invited to participate. I don't know if they're on the call or not. They were invited to participate in it. So I just wanted to make that point. So the public is sort of represented in that.
The hell of the world. I don't see him.
Okay, let me, why don't I just do this? Why don't I do this one with Andre, because we really do need Andre to continue with the meeting legally. If you can, you can mute your you mute your button on your phone, try to do that. We won't have as much feedback. So what I thought I would do in the interim here is to state that you should have been emailed. I think you have been emailed from this, Helen, the State of the City address. This year, of course, we canceled the meeting at the college that had been scheduled. And instead of a slideshow, I had to type it out, so I'm calling it my novella. It's 11 pages long. Still probably could have put a lot more into it. It's not completely some edits I'd still like to make, but I didn't want to not do it at a regularly called meeting as statute requires. So it has been presented to you officially at a regular call meeting. We will, so anyway, and I did work hard on it though, and invite you to, if you need to go to sleep or something, feel free to read through it, and it'll, it'll give you some updates on the year. Not everything is in there that I wish was in there, but nonetheless, it's 11 pages long. And I'll at least briefly say that where we are on the COVID-19 crisis, and anybody that sees Andre on, just tell me when he gets on, or Andre, if you hear me. And I'll, I'll wrap this up. Basically, as you know, we had to cancel our recent, or we had to cancel our last regularly scheduled council meeting because the first R S R reported confirmed case of COVID-19 was on March 11. We canceled all public meetings, and we had not yet, I had not even heard of Zoom yet. But at any rate, so we do have a longer agenda because we would have done some of this at the last meeting. But first of all, let me say that one of the things I hope that Zoom accomplishes is to allow me to do a better job of keeping y'all updated on what's going on with the city. A couple of you have reached out to me in the interim, and I appreciate that because it's been, it's been a lot. I take this very seriously. I have a friend, his wife is literally fighting for her life from this, so it really brings it home when that happens. And I'm afraid that our community is about to experience that same thing. So we had the advantage, I think, of being, of seeing what's coming, and so I thought, and also I followed the lead a lot of Mayor Little Rock. He's also been very aggressive on this COVID-19 issue. So we created a, issued a proclamation enacting a state of emergency for the public, because of the public health crisis. I think it was the day of or the day after the governor and Mayor Little Rock did the same thing. I think it was the same day. We had our first organizational meeting on that committee or task force for pretty much all of the public health officials, the main public health officials, and the first responder officials in the city. So we won't have two of these. We, we later expanded that to be countywide. And Judge Clark Hall and I are co-chairing it so far. He came to the first meeting. I think he was actually sick, second meeting, and we have the third meeting this Friday. We also created a hunger or a food task force to help work with schools and others, the nursing homes and many others, to try and help with food delivery. Julie Goins, Stray Warren, agreed to chair that, and has done a tremendous job, has have a lot of people, the school district and others. We've done, of course, the state closed the schools. A lot of this I don't want to go over because you already know. We enacted what is already, or I did an executive order to enforce the juvenile section of the code already on our books about juvenile curfew. The probably most interesting part of that is what do you do during the day? The juvenile coach says that during school hours, if the child, school child, aged child is on the streets, they're considered truant. So we are treating that now that spring break is over, kids are supposed to be back at home. So the school, we're still treating that the same way. And Chief Smith is here, can, can address that more if you have questions. We did not, we did not enact the adult portion of that curfew because, and a few other things that you've seen other cities and states do, such as the shut-in, even the school closures. I was asked to close the schools before the governor had actually done it. The R S R Municipal League, and I asked for this in writing, advised me that only the governor had those powers to stop businesses from operating, to stay at home orders, to close schools, and that if I were to, or adult curfews, if I were to do one of those or enforce something like that, that the governor has not yet done himself, then I, then the league would not be able to represent us if we were sued. And so I am following the governor's lead on those matters. And if you get asked those questions, why did Clark still do it? Why did Memphis do it? And so forth, even, even Little Rock did it and did it in spite of the fact that the municipal league urged not to. The reason I'm not doing it is, is because the league, legal advice, and the director of the league, he used to run the legal division, advised that we, that we would not be represented if we went that direction. So far, the governor, in most respects, has been pretty aggressive. I'm worried even though our county doesn't have a confirmed case, that I think we had 10 tests in the whole county. If you look at the number of population, that's really statistically insignificant. And there was, I wrote a letter, I've actually worked with the governor's office for two weeks on this. And eventually, out of frustration, I wrote him a formal letter. It was in the statewide paper and got some state press. It was mentioned today, I'm told, in his press conference. Because of my concern that we don't have enough testing or screening here to really represent what's going on. And in the meantime, across the river in Mississippi, we have a lot of cases, and of course, the bridge funnels people into our community from Mississippi. And I felt like voluntary screenings at the bridge was the least we could do, considering at one time we mandatorily screened people for crop diseases who crossed that bridge, and people diseases seem to be more important to me. I still feel that way. The governor seems to be weakening on that a little bit today. As of today, we still don't have a confirmed case. But if you don't already know, I'm happy to report that not long after that article was published, and the letter that U A M S and two others offered to come do screening and testing, and the first one will be this Thursday at what is the old John Deere Building Judicial Complex across from the hospital on the bypass. The screening and testing will be from 10 to 2. You will come in, their, U A M S is asking people to come in only if they feel like they might have symptoms to be screened. They will have their temperature taken. If they're a candidate for testing, they will be in state, still in their car, and it's drive-through remote car-only access, which is also important. They will be sent to a second line for testing. Those test results should be back within 48 hours, I'm told. This leaves a lot of our community out. There are people that don't have cars, can't drive, people who are shut in their home, our nursing homes, for example, have 60 something patients and many employees that need to be tested, not screened, tested. I'm working with two other entities who have agreed to test the nursing home and a few others. And you'll be hearing more about that as I hear more, hopefully in the next few days. So that's my report. Is Andre on yet? He is?
Yes.
Okay, Andre?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to you now, so we can continue the business part of our meeting and ask if you would to, well, first of all, did we finish with the treasures report? I think we were supposed to adopt.
I think you wanted to do it, just wait and look over it.
Okay. All right, so Andre, would you mind sort of taking over the virtual gal, the virtual meeting here and gavel, and talk to us about how we conduct these meetings legally. My button while you talk.
I emailed each one of your resolutions that you all have in emails regarding each one of you about
Andre. Good.
Sounds not good.
Now it is.
I emailed regarding virtual meetings. Still can't hear me? Okay. Let's see here.
I can hear you, but it's like a
Email the
Sound like it's getting feedback.
Hold on.
While Andre's doing that, just again, if you could help us get the word out about this Thursday event, it will be, it will be the first.
I think maybe your phone is giving feedback with your computer or something? Are you on your phone or on your computer?
On the computer.
Is your phone nearby?
Yeah, let me, let me move it.
He needs to shut one of them down.
I'm not on the, I'm not on the phone, Joe. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
That's better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Andre, that was better. Hey, Andre, step back from your microphone just a little bit.
No, that's worse.
Andre, step back from your microphone.
That has to be can you hear me now?
Now, now we can.
Now you can.
That's better.
Yeah, I can hear me now. Okay, I emailed, I emailed all the resolutions regarding, Mr. League, the resolution, and I prepared it to send to you all regarding how we have the meetings. And the resolution basically calls for the mayor and the city clerk to be present, and all of us to be available by some digital format with a Facebook Live zone or some other matter, as long as the public has access. Did you all see that? Yeah, we need, we need you all to adopt that as one of the first orders of business. All it has to be is a motion, second, and adopted.
If, if you could, for Sandy's sake, if you could state your name when you make a motion in a second.
Eric Jane, I move that we accept this resolution as presented.
What's that number?
Sandy, what's the number?
Number for the resolution.
Right, do you have?
I have what?
Do you have the number, the resolution number?
I do not. I have to submit, the mayor's mic is muted and Sandy's muted. I don't have the resolution number.
Sorry, it's resolution number five. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, I can hear you now.
Do I need to restate the motion?
No, we don't need to read it. We just need to, it's a motion to adopt. Ms. Ford made the motion to adopt, but no, no one seconded.
This is Wanda.
Okay, the motion is was made and seconded and called the roll.
Davis?
Yes.
Thank Columbia.
Your mic is muted, Joe.
Yes. Thank Columbia, yes. I can't hear Sandy.
Ms. Ford, can you vote?
Yes, I can. I didn't hear my name called. Ford, yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Thank Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. And then, Andre, are you still, are you gonna do ordinance temporary line, public meetings to be closed per the legislative directives?
That's, this is the way I couldn't understand what you said.
Is there a separate resolution for the issue of public meetings?
No, that's, that's the one for public meetings there. That's the council, that covers both, that covers both city council and commissions.
Okay, good, so we can move on. Okay, so it looks like we can move on to our business now. Is there any, any objection? We want to do the treasures.
I was asking about, asking Andre about the amended budget.
Oh, oh, yeah. Joe, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ask Andre your question about amended budget resolution again while, now that he's here.
Yes, on resolution number three that we're talking about, is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I wanted his opinion, opinion of this before we go into it and make a motion.
What's, what's your question about it?
I just wanted your opinion on what, what the treasurer was wanting to What, what the treasurer was wanting to do, the changes that the treasurer wanted to make, the legality of it, is it okay to move forward on it? As city attorney, your opinion?
It's, it's a finance issue, the, the city, the city, start off finances. You always a very expensive, if you do an amended budget, what you're doing is refine, if there's some improvement kinds, you're ratifying those expenditures and they, they, they become proof why you want, want to do that. I'm not saying they are inappropriate expenditures, but what you, what you can do when you amend the budget, you can amend the budget as many times you want to, so uh as long as it doesn't discriminate against somebody, you can amend the budget. So from the, from legal standpoint, it's legal if you all wanna do that. The only question that you, I would have is, uh, do you agree with the finances? That's, that's the only question that you have on them.
Yes, I agree with the finance, make sure it was legal. I know we got written up a few times because uh we were moving money around from one thing to another. I didn't want that to happen again.
Well, if, if they've done, if they've done that, then that, those are just procedural things, what you're doing is dealing with money.
Okay, I'll add.
Yes.
Thank you.
If I could, if I could just add what Eric has already said, this really, but uh, this is actually something I think we do every year uh to amend the budget for audit purposes. The auditors generally want us to do it by the end of March. Uh, they're here doing our audits now and we need to hand that over to them and Derek explained earlier that the only major expenditure was the uh payment for the Arkansas Municipal League Legal Defense Fund, right?
Thank you, so I just want to thank you, but we had to take care of the cost they could.
Oh, and because of the loss of revenue temporarily from, at the landfill from San Francisco, they uh stopped in the delivery of waste for a few months, we had to make some, some um, we had to make some transfers that were not in the original budget. Audit, this actually, Joe, the way I would answer this is to keep in compliance with audit.
And Andre, Andre uh In, in case some of the council much were concerned that uh that they may have gone over his spending limit and I was explaining to them that we approve, that they're approving their appropriation, it's not giving him permission to go over his limit. And also in the resolution says that appropriations are for any legal purpose. So therefore, by approving the budget resolution, re-appropriating the funds, that it's not giving him permission to go over his limit if they have not already give uh, have already done so.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Joe, thank Columbia, I'd like to make a motion that we accept uh resolution number three as uh presented.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt resolution number three to amended budget twenty nineteen. Uh, is there a second? And if you would state your name. Anyway, I mean, I'm not sure if you did second it, I'll get here a second, so there's motion for to adopt resolution number three. I'm sorry for the feedback. Um, is there a second? Uh, did y'all hear that? Um, I guess, is there any more questions about the budget amendment? What it does, it's basically a cleanup budget amendment that y'all adopt every year uh to be in compliance with the auditors, with the state audit. Um, that's really all it is.
I have a question about that.
Chris, okay, Chris, we didn't know you had slips. Okay.
Uh, is this, this gonna be like the twenty nineteen, right?
Right.
So, uh, a reason why I didn't second the motion is because there were some issues like serial contracts that we had talked about at the beginning of last year and the middle of last year, then we wanted to look at some things that was, was done without our approval, so that, I mean, we do, I'm worried about that. And so we adopt this cleanup budget with, with everything that the mayor has did in previous with serial contracts, that's with the uh the, to not, you know, uh, knowledge contract with the computer services, those things, with the people who did the, something, some people did some work in the city, there's also that issue that I was concerned about. If we do that, uh, what is it called, uh, what, what is it, technology contract, like computer services, all those, cause I think we went to, the mayor choose IT in a box or somebody, you know, we were worried about that, that serial contract, so that would have, if we vote to do this cleanup budget, we approving that line item as well, right?
Chris, I think that's what I was trying to get Andre to pay, that's my understanding of the way that
Um, what's, can you hear me? Well, frankly, that would be uh, basically the cleanup budget is to uh clean up everything that, that you have. Uh, what, what, what the mayor and treasurer asked is that you approve all expenses that were spent in two thousand nineteen. Once you do the right, once you did this, is ratify every expense that was spent.
Well, Andre, Andre, what Derek was saying, I don't think it got across on this platform, but um, he was saying that it does not ratify anything that would be above my spending limit or any uh whatever Chris said on the contracts. Of course, the IT budget was set and it actually was spent less in that category because of what happened, so we didn't go over the budget. There are only two items, uh, our main two items would be the, so in other words, all this is, is a cleanup budget, it's a budget, it's a moving uh money, uh, I think Derek said from the police department to the legal defense fund to pay the municipal league. And it was from sanitation to the landfill to pay some landfill expenses while we were undergoing the San Francisco County issue. Uh, so there are just category changes in the budget and it's a resolution, doesn't change uh or ratify any action that I took or did not take, for that matter, regarding spending authorities being limits or contracts. It's just budget, in other words.
Andre, can you hear me?
Did you hear me, Andre? Andre?
Andre. Andre.
Can you hear?
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the thing that I was saying that the way that the budget, the way that the resolution of word is that I'm asking for uh reappropriations, I'm not asking the council to uh approve any contract or actions for any legal purpose. So if the council has not approved uh him going over his spending limit, or if they have not approved the contract, that is not for a legal purpose. This, this resolution isn't asking for approval for anything like that, it's just asking to reappropriate funds.
I'm not aware of any, uh, the issues that Chris brought up about the contracts were actually resolved because the council did bet on each contract individually. I'm not aware of any other issue like that that would be out there, but even if it was out there, this doesn't ratify that. All it does is, is make the budget between nineteen categories fit the correct categories as actually expended, as we mentioned, the legal defense fund and the uh landfill sanitation issues. That's, so it's just a cleanup budget for audit purposes.
But if you need to look at it and, you know, I mean, you can look at it and, you know, if it's, I thought I gave it to you a couple of weeks ago, but you haven't had a chance to look at it, we can, you know, use some time to look at it and to give your opinion on it.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor, a second, uh, is anybody uh get any other questions? We move on. Okay. If there's not another motion if there's not another motion, a second on the resolution uh, let me go on to new business. There's no objection. Okay. Under any business, I said, is there business on your, on here? The first step is the resolution to be adopted on the computer grant application from the state. Um, Helen, do you want to explain that?
We have been working with um a, a grant writer to try to pull together a proposal to upgrade the city's computers and uh technological infrastructure. We've got some servers that are aging and we've got a lot of computers that are operating on Windows seven, which is no longer supported, and we're trying to apply for a grant to the, through the Arkansas Economic Development Commission, the fifty thousand dollar scholarship, grant rather, not scholarship. But we need a resolution to support uh application of that.
I, I would just add quick. Go ahead, Joe.
Is, is that the resolution that says Arkansas Community Assistant Program?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and that's uh resolution number?
Six.
I move that we accept resolution number six for the Arkansas Community Assistant Grant Program. I make a motion.
Frank, let's second.
Miss Frank, on the, Frank, on seconds.
Yes.
Thank Columbia, yes, if you didn't get it.
Okay, Davis?
Yes.
Crockett? Franklin?
Yes.
Six, yes. Okay.
Okay, motion passes. So, thank you very much. That'll also get all of our computers in compliance uh with Microsoft Support License so that we'll be safer. There are a lot of security threats out there to cities right now, and this is something that um we just, you know, uh, wasting more time on, so thank you for your, your expeditions treatment of that. Thank you, Helen. Okay, the next item on the agenda is interlocal agreement regarding the justice complex passage uh section four you, or emailed to you, as we've talked about for a long time, uh, I did not want to bring anything to you until it was actually in writing. So before you is the interlocal agreement uh between proposed lease agreement between the county and the city. Um, I'm, I'm not sure, probably the biggest question uh about this has been, and then I'm sure there might be other questions, but uh the term of the, of the, of the agreement. So at one point, there was some concern by the council for the term being up, I think it was in, into three years. Uh, the idea there was Judge Hall wanted to be able to renew the lease if he does run for reelection or is defeated or something like that. And I think the idea or the question was that that's not enough time. So, uh, I communicated that, I think Andre mentioned that, I'm not sure actually he raised it, but no, that was one of the concerns. So the way that's handled in this lease agreement is that we actually have at least until December twenty thirty-eight. Um, sorry, um, however, the addition to this lease is that I asked for is an appropriation clause. What the appropriation clause does, um, let me see if I can if you read under, I believe it's uh, no, paragraph three, and I'll read it really quickly after it talks about the terms, says this agreement is subject to appropriation of necessary funds for lease payment of hell, West Helen City Council appropriation of necessary funds for utilities and maintenance of facility by Phillips County Court. Assignment or subletting of this lease is prohibited. Um, just means we can't sublet it, but the purpose of that clause that I asked for, first of all, uh, in the last year, the lawyers for the municipal league have advised me that any contract we undertake has to have an appropriation clause. And any contract we are in that does not is immediately rendered an inappropriate contract because we cannot bind a future uh appropriation year um in a contract format. So basically, by adding the appropriation clause to this lease agreement, we get both our cake and we can eat it too. We can have the long-term lease unless we decide to get out of it and not, and we don't appropriate that money. Uh, then that means that we could get out of it uh on any annual basis. So that's the main thing I wanted to explain about it. And would take any questions that you have? I hope everybody heard me. Uh, make sure you unmute your, your uh, unmute your phone there. If you're, if you're asking a question, unmute it. Joe, I think we were asking a question.
Okay. Just Joe saying, yeah, I have no question. I've, 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 I've read what I, I saw what I wanted.
Now, I'm also trying to give you some time to look it over. Any other questions? And also, also Okay, no questions. Um, so in order to adopt an interlocal agreement, uh, how does the council feel about it at this point? Andre, do you wanna lay in on this at, at this point and give us your opinion? Or Don, anybody else?
Well, I just wanna remind the city council, this is the agreement that uh the county came to us with last year regarding the new jail. It, it reports to move the police department to the uh, what it was formerly the John Deere Building. It calls for twenty-seven thousand dollars in annual payment for the uh utilities. It does not spell out what utilities are included in this, uh, that's one concern I would have, it doesn't spell out what utilities, or what they consider to be a utility. Uh, the total cost of you, if, if, if we were staying it for the entire time is approximately four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, the treasurer had to go on record saying that the city would have the money, the city could pay this off within this year. This is the same issue we have going with the lawsuit with Crystal Clear Solutions. Uh, when we entered to long-term contracts, uh, the question would be, could you afford to pay it all in one year if you could? And so we had to be consistent with that. Four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars is total over, overall. It does call for refinancing, renegotiating at some point if the utilities go up or go down. Uh, the, the concern The, the concern that I have with that is said it may be, this is not binding on either party, that it shall be renegotiated if it goes up and down. This is clearly a financial issue, those little things can be worked out. The financial issue as to first, where the treasurer applies that we could, we could pay this off with one year, that is the legal defense that. Municipal league articulated relating to the Crystal Clear Solutions lawsuit. The second thing would be. The total amount that you're, you're looking at spending over those years. And whether you think that's a good use of the funds, that's all the financial issue. The mayor believes there's deals, that's up to you all and you all discussed it as to go forward. My math may be a little off, but I think it was seven year, seventeen year contract at twenty seven thousand dollars annually. But the, the, the things that I have concerns about are minor. You all have the financial issue that you have discussed whether the city should engage in expensive moving the department, moving the apartment there. The pros and cons of it. What is the cost for you to actually relocate the police department? What we doing with the nine one one system, et cetera? This is not related, but it is related in the sense of the jail fees are now going to be almost double, that's what we were paying the county. Cause we have a separate jail fee and that's, that's, that's where we are at, at that point. But it's, it's up to you all as a, as a financial decision, I cannot make financial decision for you. I would defer to the city clerk and the city treasurer, waiting their opinion on the feasibility they're paying for. And the city treasurer is for it. Yes.
I was just, the only thing I would say to that, though. That we're not going to be paying this, we should be paying far less for fifty five dollars. A day for prisoners versus what we've been paying sixty five to eighty five.
Yeah, it's fifty three dollars a day.
Yeah, fifty three dollars a day, so it's not higher or slower. And of course, we're not to deal with transportation either, so that issue.
But when I say higher, I, I, I'm saying higher as opposed to our current agreement with them. We've been paying forty for, for years, that's, that's what I mean by higher.
You mean under the old jail? The old jail, okay, alright, sorry. I just wanted to clarify that, we will be paying less than jail fees. Though, than what we're paying to other jails now. Plus, we don't have to deal with the transport costs and we don't have to deal with losing personnel who are, and not to mention. The transport itself and gas and so forth. So we expect to experience a lot of savings on, on that, of course, we have more prisoners. The total actual cost per prisoner per day should be significantly less than what we are paying. Unless it's a juvenile or a female, which hasn't changed because of this jail. The other thing, Andre, if you would speak to the issue of the long-term, I was gonna say about the utilities. It says it shall be. Renegotiated at the beginning of each new judge or mayor's term. If the.
Right, I, I saw the term that. And then I saw the term that it may be renegotiated at the beginning of, of either mayor or county director's term. The, the one issue that I was saying to the city council is that they need to know exactly what it's going to cost us to relocate the department. Cause that's, that's a hidden financial issue that we don't have within this. It sounds like a good idea. The question is to fi, the finances, that's, that's, that's all I'm saying is, because you're paying twenty seven thousand, what are you paying now utilities versus twenty seven thousand annually? What are you going to cost to relocate, what are you going to do about nine one one system? And those type of things, those are, those are questions that you have to answer to make an informed decision.
So I can tell you that in our negotiations, the nine one one system has been off, off, I mean, not, not even up for discussion. I won't, I won't even allow that to be discussed, we're going to continue to keep that. That's not going to change. Not as long as I'm here anyway. The, it is true, I guess, future administration, future council could change their mind about nine one one, but as long as I'm here, it's not something that, that I would even entertain. And the, the county understands my position on that. As far as the expenses, savings, all good questions. I, I know that our net should, because if you'll notice, the cleaning and light maintenance issues. You have to look at what we're paying now versus what we would pay under this situation. And I want the chief, if you want to discuss that, we've, we believe we're saving money on this, significant money now. It's not saving money, we consider that we're losing the tax revenue. And of course, the judge's point about tax revenue, I'm not going to plow that old ground, but. Cause y'all probably have already many times. Is, but his point is that the harbor tax might not have been renewed anyway, and so we could have faced that loss revenue. Anyway, ultimately, and, and now that whether that's true or not, I don't know, I'm just telling you what his position is on it. In which case, the tax will continue and we'll have a jail and we should save money. Chief, you want to discuss the savings part of that?
Good evening, everybody. Pretty much based off the numbers that the city treasurer had given us, right now currently, we're spending about fifty three thousand dollars a year. On the current facility, which is sixteen hundred square feet. Due to our demand of manpower and, and, and room and just being efficient with the new jail and. Being on one accord with the sheriff department, who would like to try to move to this new facility, which is going to give us about three thousand square feet. Currently, as the mayor had said, we had never mentioned anything about the nine one one system, which is that gives us about, I believe, about twenty thousand dollars a year. For the city, which we're going to keep and maintain that, the sheriff department is pretty much in arrangement now to move their systems over. Into the new facility as well. On the technical side. For its moving expenses, only thing that we're looking at is the IT portion. And moving the nine one one system, in which I've already spoke with Motorola. And looking at trying to achieve a grant, receive a grant right now to move our systems over to an A-Win system where everybody's pretty much is incompatible. With the state police and the sheriff department as well, which write down for new radio system, we have the high-tech console, which is going into. A new phase now called Phase Two. And that's, that going to currently cost, under this grant, about three hundred and fifty dollars. But the total package for the new nine one one system for its A-Win capabilities, it's going to be about sixty six thousand dollars, which we can. Get a grant to start implementation of that. For its square footage, because of our demand and our investigation. The, the square footage is going to include an area where investigators can actually investigate. The dispatcher, a bigger room for nine one one and also future expansions, if the police department is expand a little bit more than what it truly is now. But only thing right now is we're looking at a probably, based off the numbers, about a twenty one thousand dollar savings. Compared to what we're paying now and in comparison to a sixteen hundred square feet and getting a three thousand. Square feet facility or an area for work usage.
Any questions from the council?
I have a question.
Okay, Chris?
Uh, I know she said it was, it's going to cost us to move out there twenty seven thousand dollars a year. And Mr. Valance said, the total for seventeen years, it is four hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. And I was wondering what would happen to our old facility? And if this will cost us that much money, what are we going to pay for seventeen years? We can build us a new facility for that price over seventeen years. And what hap, what happens when we lose the revenue? So how would that, how would that shape our finances? And you look at utilities, and I know we, we got, we got a couple agendas out there, I know they make like eighteen thousand a year or better. We have one out there, so.
Yes.
I mean, it sa, it, it sounds to be, to be pretty good, but look at how much. We need to know how this is going to affect us in July. I mean, I, I, we do need something different, but what if we can't afford it? And then, you know, the mayor said that as long as he's here, that he won't let it go up or whatever, but. What happens when we lose the money and we can't afford it? Because we don't know what's going to happen right now, because I think we, we got some more issues going on, I think we got lawsuits and things like that, so.
Well, let me respond to some of that, we always have lawsuits currently. We're, we're doing pretty well outside between Andre and municipal league and others in terms of our track record on that. But of course, this year, we're only going to experience half the loss of that income. The use of the. Old bill, the, the, right now, they're, they're running out of space, the goal is to lease out part of the place that's on Plaza, the police department is using now. To help cover those costs. One of the problems. Let me just say this, one of the issues, and it's not your fault, I'm not blaming anybody, so don't get me wrong there, but. It takes a long time to plan these things. So I think the, no, by, by the end of this year is the date, about before we'd actually move in. It could be sooner, but it could not be any later than the end of this year. But there's a lot of planning that goes into this and cannot be planned until we make a decision. And I'm not trying to pressure you to make a decision, I'm just letting you know. That some of these questions are good questions, but they have to be answered. Once we kind of know what direction we're going to go in, and that's kind of what I'm looking to hear from you today. Is what direction you want us to go with.
I think it may be some misunderstanding, to my understanding that. Andre's saying it's going to cost four hundred and seven thousand dollars. And you can't get into a, into a contract unless it's. I thought that the mayor said that the. Appropriations clause that's in the agreement states that. The agreement can't continue unless the funds for it are appropriated. So you're basically appropriating the funds every year. And so you're not appropriating four hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars, all you would be doing was, would be appropriating twenty seven thousand dollars. A year, and that is the reason why the municipal league recommended that you have the appropriations clause in there. Is so that you wouldn't be on the hook for four hundred and seven thousand dollars, you would only be on the hook for whatever was appropriated for that year. And that's just my understanding. And.
I'm tired of it. And I interrupt you because the issue is in Crystal Clear Solutions, what solutions, what the municipal league is arguing is, if you look at the contract as a whole. Look at the contract as a whole, what you could pay it all off in one year. And that's, that's a legal defense, they said that they, that's why they said we terminate Crystal Clear Solutions, so. That's the technical issue, and I'm just trying to be consistent with what they said and what the legal defense in that lawsuit is. But with that, I, I go back to you so you can finish your, your statement.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you that that was a technical issue with the Crystal Clear Communications Contract. And so the municipal league, to prevent us from getting into that situation again. Has recommended that we use the appropriation clause that would prevent us from getting into the situation.
That's not just the appropriation clause, what it is, is even if you have the appropriation clause in it, what you're saying is the contract, it's the term of the contract is seventeen years. It says in, in the beginning of it, it says seventeen years, so we have to calculate that from the beginning. We could ask for a legal opinion from them, but I'm pretty sure that's, that's, that's what, that's what the basis that they were, that they were articulate. Is that. Is that.
But, but the two are linked, the.
Right, the two are linked.
Yeah, one of the main reasons that Crystal Clear Solutions Contract. Was, was considered illegal was because there's no appropriation clause. And so if you have a long-term contract, but you have an appropriation clause, then basically the taxpayers, the city elected officials have an out every year. And you can't bond a future council, future, even a future budget, annual budget. If it's not in there, then it's, it's rendered illegal. So you'd have to have both, so if you have the preparation clause and you have the contract. I mean, my understanding, but I'm not a lawyer, so I defer to you on this, but my understanding of what I've heard from, from about this is we have to have, I think you said this earlier. We have to have the money to be able to pay it in that budget year, correct?
Correct.
And if we don't, and we say we don't, then we get out of it, we can't, and even if we can, and we want to get out with the appropriation clause, we can. So even if we could pay the contract, but the approach, we, we don't want to appropriate it for whatever reason, we still can get out of this contract. So it's kind of like having your cake and eating it too, really.
I mean, but we can get a legal.
I mean, that, that's what I was told, Andre, I'll defer to you lawyers to argue that, but that's what I was told.
And then, and with, with that to the, I think Mr. Franklin was questioning. The, the utility cost, actually, our utility costs are about twenty eight thousand dollars. So we would be saving whatever would be in, in maintenance, like the maintenance would be the. The housekeeper aspect of, but the utility.
No, we don't pay, I mean, major maintenance, we don't pay.
As far as the.
Oh, the savings, I got you.
But yeah, the utility, and I understand you're at, for, for the last four years, have been in the range of twenty, twenty seven, twenty eight thousand dollars. And so we aren't paying a lease right now, we own, we're not paying a lease, we're paying twenty seven thousand dollars. And so to go over there, the utilities are included, except for telephone, we will be paying twenty seven thousand dollars. We can't stay in the, in the hell of West, well, police department and not pay utilities. And so being a going concern, hold on, being a going concern. Means annually, we have to pay something, we have to pay utilities, even though we're not paying a lease, we have to pay utilities. And so if we can't pay utilities, we couldn't be able to, we couldn't be in the building.
Well, one of the questions, one of the questions that's not spelled out in the contract is simply this. They do not articulate what utilities are they considered to be utilities.
I, I think they did, I think they said they would pay everything except.
I didn't see it in the four corners of the document.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it to you under paragraph two. In exchange for the space outlined above for city police, city agrees to pay county an annual amount of twenty five, twenty seven thousand dollars. Which includes leased space of no less than three thousand square feet. Energy and water utilities excluding phones and internet. Upkeep and cleaning included and light maintenance included. That's what it says in a paragraph two.
Okay, well, I didn't see that version of it, but, so that's, that's, that's includes what?
Basically, it includes besides square feet, energy and water utilities, upkeep and cleaning, light maintenance. It excludes phones and internet.
What is up, Keith?
Basic.
Ceilings, stuff like walls, anything dealing with the ceilings, the walls, any type of major repair.
Kind of like if you rent your house, you, you know, the stuff the landlord has to do, that kind of stuff, is what I read. I'll keep that.
I'm saying. I understand, but my, my point is, is, is pretty basic. When we, all of us are here may have an understanding today. But all I'm saying is these things are minor, they could be worked out, but all of us may have an understanding today, but those things need to be clearly spelled out. Because somebody looking two years from now, if, if all of us gone in two years and someone else is in all these positions. That needs to be a clear understanding, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I, I agree about the clear understanding, I just, I'm not sure how we would make it more clear. It excludes phones and internet. It includes pretty much everything else, is our read. The only thing it wouldn't include is if they had gas out there.
Did you say, you said it excludes upkeep?
It says energy, that's true, so that would be gas and electricity.
I have another question.
The energy would be gas and electric, so the only thing it excludes, Andre, I think it's pretty specific. It excludes phones, internet, includes everything else.
Would that include?
Christopher.
For a police department, would that include nine one one?
Nine one one is not part of this, nothing changes with nine one one, period.
We still take control of, we still, Mr. Val, we still take control of the nine one one.
Is that, is that in, what I'm saying, is that in that written document?
Is it in the document?
Well, there's no reason to include it, if it's not included, it's not included. Well, there's no reason to include it, if it's not included, it's not included. Now, I don't think it's not a matter for negotiation, I don't know why we would include it in a lease agreement.
Okay.
I mean, then again, you know, this this is a, you know, you asked, the council asked me to go, bring a renegotiation, that's what you. Uh if you if you need some more time to look at it, uh you know, you have, you know, just.
I can tell you the understanding verbally. Is that we're not willing to negotiate nine one one, and I'm not gonna give in on nine one one, it's not a matter of negotiation, nothing changes about nine one one. So there's nothing to put in writing, because there's no agreement that needs to be made. They they don't, I don't know, I don't really like the idea of of even suggesting that they have, that there has to be an agreement. I'm sorry, let's let's want to go ahead.
My question is, and I guess I'm in agree with with Attorney Valley, it's not in the written document. I know you're saying that it's not a discussion, but nine one one is part of the police department as they move, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, that's part of the rule.
Okay, so I think what Mr. Valley is trying to say, and I think I agree with him. What happens if you move over there and then it's not anywhere written that nine one one was not included? They have a nine one one system too, so they can take over the whole thing, what happens then? What what would it hurt to put it in the document, that nine one one is not included in this document?
Yeah, I I agree with what you're saying as well, and and it it sounds good, but we're the ones, we can't give. You know, they can't get nothing that we don't give to them. We have our own facility, I mean, that area. We have our own place for dispatchers, they have, they're gonna have their own area for dispatchers. To do with us, but I understand where you're coming from, what you're saying.
Okay, so it it's better when it's written, like in the four corners of that paper?
But yeah, there is an agreement on nine one one now for us to have it, so we'd have to do something to give it to them, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Besides a police car, I mean, I. To me, that's like saying we're gonna have to put in here that we're not gonna give them a police car, I mean, they don't have any right to the police car, so why would we? Say that, so put that in there, but but having said that, I mean, I.
Here, here, one, here's one thing that I want you to understand, a- all of you. When you enter to a lease agreement, when you, one, I think uh uh nine one one is essential to any law enforcement agency. Especially at Helena West on the police department, and there's certain things that are that are fixtures. When you move into somebody else's building, this is no longer our building, once you attach something to the property, it is there, that is considered a fixture. And so one of the things that I want to do is go through and discuss all of those things as well, because there are some things that when we leave, that we. If we leave, we want to take with us. If you go in, and there are arguments right now, people who attach the TV to walls, those are things, it's a technical matter. Uh once you attach it to the wall, it becomes a fixture. Uh Mr. Turner can explain that as as well, and it's one of those things, that once we attach certain things to there, uh they can argue legitimately, that that's ours. That's a fixture, you you improved our property.
Okay, well, let me just say that it does exclude phones and internet, nine one one's phone system essentially.
Lose you from the fact of paying, though.
No, it's, it includes, it it excludes them from paying for it, so. Uh in other words, we have to pay for it, so they don't have any particular ownership of the phone system, just because.
They know how to attach it, it's a fixture.
Does it have to be bolted down?
Yeah.
I'm asking, how does something become a fixture, because in my, I'm not a lawyer, but I did take it in as well, and I understand what fixtures are, and I did take real estate, Doug did too. And so Doug kind of understands this, I don't think a nine one one system would become a fixture. A fixture is something like a fence, or you putting in a ceiling fan, something that you actually attach, nail, you bolt. You cement into a property, um even in machinery. Machinery in 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 factories don't, it's not considered a fixture, it's considered the property of if you're leasing. So I'm, I guess what I'm getting, trying to get from you is, how are you, are you sure that a nine one one system?
I said.
I I I think, and I agree with you that you should put as much in the agreement as possible in writing. So there will be no misunderstandings.
Made it simple is, what 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 I keep saying is, I wanted everything spelled out, period, so that. Listen, well, again, there gonna come a day when none of us are sitting at this table, and if this agreement lasts seventeen years. I'm not trying to beat the agreement up, I would meet, I would meet with, I would meet with Amos so we could put all the concerns in it and and address the things that I concerned. If y'all want to prove it, only thing I asked you all about was was financial issue, that's all I asked you about.
I I gave you my answer on financial issue, I'm talking, you start talking about a fixture, and I just don't see a nine one one system being a fixture, I mean, I may be wrong.
And I still have a question.
Well, Derek, I think you're wrong absolutely on the finances.
I told, I I said that, I don't have a problem, I I don't see a problem with paying twenty seven thousand dollars a year, because you pay about twenty eight thousand dollars in utilities. Uh and so I don't see a problem with paying twenty seven thousand, twenty thousand dollars a year for a lease, I I have no problem with that at all.
So what, what Mr. Turner, since you're saying that, once we move out, what would be the the expenses in the in the facility for the city?
Twenty seven thousand dollar lease.
No, I'm talking about ninety eight East Plaza.
What would be what?
The expenses. You still gonna have a building, where utilities, what's gonna be the expenses?
Well, the expenses that the fire department paid, the fire department has, we have separate utilities for the fire department and the police department.
No, I'm talking about the part that's gonna be vacated, what is the issue, what are we gonna do with that?
That was my question.
If if no one's there, well, I I guess we wouldn't have utilities there. And if we, it wouldn't be thirty thousand, we wouldn't have a telephone, we wouldn't have telephone lines for the police department. Like I said, the the fire department and the police department have separate utilities, they have separate vehicles to the police department.
Let's turn on that on. What I'm trying to say is this, once you move out, the city council might have to make a decision as to what they're gonna do with that. Particular portion of the facility, and there's still gonna be some utilities associated with it, unless you're gonna leave it vacant for the next seventeen years. That's all I'm trying to say.
The utilities associated with it would be the utilities that the fire department are currently paying. Their utilities are continuing, they're still gonna be there, so you still have to pay their utilities, their utilities will continue. If another entity was to lease the 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 police department's portion, then their entity would cover those expenses. I don't see having lights on, or or have a telephone service in the police section if it's not being used.
I have a question, is the fire department going to, I'm sorry, is the fire department going to remind out there?
As far as I know.
Yeah, yes, that's the plan.
They want to use it, I mean, why, why do we, do we need it for something, anything?
I do think uh it would, although although the window is important over there. The truth is, the water department building on Plaza is in extremely bad shape. Um so there's also, there's also that issue.
What, to move them over there, or is that what you're saying?
I mean, that's a, that's just, I I'm not saying I want to do that, that's just something to be discussed, because the building here at the end right now. Is has lots of very expensive problems, and I just seen, get them out of there for health reasons. And put it up for sale if y'all agreed to it, but.
Well, the 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 technical issue is, I think we all asked the wrong question relating to that. The council decides all real property and finances, so the reason why I brought it up is council, you all had to see what I was asking, and within the vein, I asked Mr. Turner. But really, that's a question directed to the council, is if you all vote to move it, what you all gonna do with the building?
I. What question are you saying we're asking the wrong questions? What questions are you saying were wrong?
I didn't say, I said I, I directed it to Mr. Turner, I said, but the question should have been directed to the city council. The question should have been directed to the city council, if you vote to move them out, then what are you all gonna do with the building, because that's a decision for the city council to make.
And and see, that was part of my question, we we just paid, we just paid a hundred thousand dollars, had a roof fix. We, and then the poli- the police department has came in and made some changes of the of that building, and if it's gonna cost us twenty seven thousand dollars a year. And two hundred, uh well, two thousand and two hundred fifty dollars a month to to move out there. What plans do the administration have in place to say, hey, listen, we need to find somebody to lease this building, because we all gonna lose money. We we spent a lot of money on that building, and if the fire department's gonna remain out there, uh you gotta look at, so how would that affect them? They need more room, we just fixed the leaks over there, and the mayor was saying the water department was in, is in, the building is in bad shape. Of course it is, because we 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 were trying to tell him about the water department being in such a bad shape. Before Jack Ross left here, all these CDs and stuff was cashed in, and and paying for him to travel from Helena to Kentucky. Could have been avoided to fix some of those problems over there. We knew that the water department is in bad shape. The police department moved over over there as well to to take up some space, so uh my thing is this, how do we? Uh get the revenue for that building, if the police, if we vote to move the police department out there. We need to try to find somebody who's gonna get in that building and pay us two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars a month to lease that space. The water department, okay, we, if we move the water department, can the water department pay us the two, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars a month? So we can have that revenue to go out to the building, that's that's something I was looking at.
But that's our, that's our building, that's ours, what do you mean?
Yeah, but the water department, the water department is supposed to pay us rent for the building in Helena. They have not paid us rent for that building yet.
I mean, I get Chris's point, it would be a way to use water revenue for the general revenue of the building, I I think it's a good point. Even though we own the building, I I would say, really, the police department building, Plaza is part of that, the fire department will stay there. Unless unless somebody else besides me makes a decision about that, um they want to stay there, they do need more room. The 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 water office on Plaza right now has roof issues and many, many other issues. Um that will be expensive if for some reason we end up deciding to stay there because of safety for our workers, if nothing else. We will have to deal with that. Uh I would rather not deal with it and see if if it's possible to sell it. At least save money on the utilities over there and move them somewhere else, and some of the police, uh the investigators are over there too right now. So this would solve a problem in space for the police department as well. Um as far as what we do on Plaza, I think that's extremely, I actually agree with a lot of comments that have been made about it. But I do think it's a separate issue.
Well.
From the justice complex.
And but but man, what I'm saying, we, the water department in Helena. We own that building, the municipal building you're in right now, we, they supposed to pay us rent, am I right, Mr. Sandy? They have not paid us anything. We supposed to collect rent off the water department, we have, we have not yet to collect a dime off of it. That's a way that we could pay, because we don't know what we gonna lose, we have become business, this is a business. And they owe us some money, we raise water rates, they need to be paying us something, because if we gonna move out here, we need some revenue to at least cover half that. And I know I'm not crazy, the water department in Helena is leasing that part of the building, am I right, Mr. Valley?
Chris, Chris, I agree, me, me, me and the 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 city clerk have discussed that, uh in in uh they were. Supposed to be paying us a water department contribution.
How much was it supposed to be paid?
Actually, they weren't able to do so, but uh with the increased revenue, we were talking, discussing them resuming those payments. So I I I agree with you, and I think everyone else, that the water department should be, uh that's an agreement that we have with them, they should be. Honoring that agreement.
Right, because.
And they they hadn't been doing it because because finance had allowed them to do so.
Well, I had, I I talked about this, when we raised the rates, and they would collect, they got, they getting some revenue now, but I'm looking at this. And we gonna lose some money, we collect some money, because if we move out here, there'll be, I don't want it to be said that the city council. Is spending money we don't have, and we we need to see, look at their lease agreement, see how much money we can collect for using that building. And we need to pay for it, so that we can say, hey, if if we charge them uh twelve dollars a month. Okay, that's half of what we need to go out there, we can pay the other half, but we need to make sure we got the revenue to do it.
But Chris, Chris, the uh the revenue that we're using now to pay the utilities, current revenue that we use from the property tax and sales tax and. Franchise fees that we currently use, they, we sure that the police department, that whole same revenue would be.
And Mr. Turner, I I I understand it, but we need some cushion still.
Hey, hey, Chris. Chris, Sandy and I were talking, and uh she she informed me that, actually, you're you're right. The water department should have been paying us five thousand dollars a month, five thousand for each building. So actually, they knocked in ten thousand dollars a month because they did not have the money. Of course, because of what y'all did, they do now have that money.
Right.
I think that's an excellent point, and it's also a way that uh we, whether they move into that building or not, you could actually collect that. Or even the five thousand, i- if you move them. We have been collecting it.
Yes, well, yeah, we have been collecting since I did it, this recently.
So where 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 is that money? So, okay, that's what I'm saying, if if they owe, if we supposed to be collecting ten thousand dollars. Okay, if 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 they move out of, if if we move or move this around, we we could pay them to go out to the justice complex. And we can start fixing fixing one of those buildings with some of their money, uh even the West Helena Police Department, we can fix that. We can start using that re- put that revenue to start fixing up some of our property, so in case something happens. We have a decent building to come back to, because if you look at the city council room, it's becoming an issue now as well. We we can take some of that money to start fixing up our property, they should be able to, we voted to uh increase revenue. For the water department, they should pay us back, back pay for that, so we can have that revenue. If we do go over there, at least we can pay up to move out to the justice complex for a couple of months. So we can have, before July come, at least we can have, pay up for a couple of months and say, hey, we got a little cushion, a little, a little room to move around. That's my thing.
Chris, I had already talked to the mayor about this about three weeks ago, actually, I I I told him that uh we had a water department. If you, if you look at the budget, you'll see a water department contribution of about a hundred, hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, that's. About ten thousand, six hundred and sixty seven dollars a month that they were supposed to give us.
So ha- ha- have we been receiving that money monthly?
Well, actually, we stopped sometimes during twenty nineteen, because they were having difficulties, we had. Problems with pumps and all sorts of things like that, so.
Okay, so when, when will we know, when will we start back to collecting, will, are we gonna ask for back pay? For uh like September, will we go back to September of nineteen, until current, will we ask for that money?
I mean, there are limits that we've been taking, um statutory limits that we can take, um and like I said, it is a serious one. But we, there are statutory limits that that we have with the franchise.
Right, but that's that's part of their utilities, rent is a part of their utilities, and and if I don't, well, if I didn't pay my rent, I'd get kicked out. That's part of the utility, so like, we should be able to collect that fund, so that we can have, if we move out to the justice complex. It's gonna cost us money to to hire some people to move all our equipment out there, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
So we need to be asking, I mean, I think it's a good idea to move out to the justice complex. Now, since I see what what Mr. Valley talks to, uh Amy Board and work out these other little kinks. And uh the the money we just talked about, the ten thousand dollars, hey, we we should have like six thousand dollars to uh to play with off rent. With the water department, and we can start trying to get somebody to fix that roof out there, and start trying to fix for the water, the building that we own, we can fix that. With the money we're receiving a month from the water department, that's part of our upkeep of our property, that's our property. We should try to maintain the building, in case we find some company wants to come in here, and lease that building out. It's so, it's right across street from the po- for the former police department, right across street from the fire department, we could find some company would have come in and leased that office space out. Is it a secure, is it a secure place?
I have a comment whenever.
Go ahead, Ms. Ma.
I just have a comment about the justice complex, or moving to the justice complex, I think it's a a grand idea. Uh as far as the move is concerned, as far as the space. As far as if, I don't think all the legalities are worked out, but as far as the payments that'll be made, we're already paying. It seems that there's going to be a savings, of course, there's one, there's probably gonna be some things that we haven't uh gotten to yet, but. If, I mean, I'm just one person, but if it's any way possible, I mean, I think we need to be moving forward, I mean, it's just. I don't know, this is the same building that I grew up under, you know, going up to when I was a girl and. we need to be moving, I just, uh.
I have a question.
About it, but anyway.
Ms. Wanda.
My question is, I hear that, where we're saying that we, the water company might possibly owe us back money. Uh, is it, am I wrong in assuming, in thinking that we owe the water company? From money that we borrowed from the water company, and like, when we borrowed from the land?
We don't owe the water department any money, and as far as the, 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 the contribution from the water department, like I said, we did have statutory limits where we take, I think it's four hundred, I mean, four, four and a half, four, four and a quarter percent of the rent, four and a half percent of the franchise. So we just can't go in there and raid, uh, there's, there's a certain amount that we can take out based upon their, uh, gross revenue. And the ten thousand, the ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars was a little bit under the four percent anyway. Uh, but like I said, recently, uh, sometime during twenty, uh, nineteen, uh, we had some issues with some pumps and some other things with the sewer levy that they're in, uh, what's that, forty-four, at that sewer pump? And so they just weren't able to, to maintain those, those payments. And also statutory, statutory, they aren't supposed to make those payments if they have for operations. And so those payments are supposed to be above, above and beyond operational expenses. And so at that particular time, we couldn't feasibly take those, uh, those payments from the water department and them operate, uh, the way they're supposed to. So that's, that's the reason why we stopped the payments.
Ms. Wanda, her done?
I have a question, but I, I, I need to double back, uh, to some of these numbers. As far as the contract goes, the, the term energy, I agree, needs to be defined. Does the building have, uh, natural gas, or does it, do we know if it has natural gas or not? Because that's an expense that sometimes mushroom becomes huge. And so I would, I would like energy to be defined in the contract.
So would you be happy if it said electricity and gas?
Yes.
Instead of energy?
Yes.
Who did that con- who did it? I'm sorry.
Amy, Amy Boyd.
Um, as it relates to the, uh, I, I think the projection from the treasurer was that we would spend fifty-three thousand dollars on the existing building. And I think his projection was twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, for utilities. Can, i- i- is it possible to tell us what, how do you break the twenty-seven thousand dollars down on utilities? Which part of that is lights, and which, and what is the rest of it? And then, two parts to that question, the next thing is, where does the other twenty-six thousand go? And I apologize if I missed it in here somewhere, but where does the other twenty-six thousand dollars go?
Uh, the, the, those numbers that I've given you before sometime last year, uh, approximately eighteen thousand was for cable, internet, and telephone service, was six thousand dollars for cable, internet, email, uh, twelve thousand dollars for telephone, but nine thousand dollars for electricity and a thousand for gas, and those were actual costs.
Okay, so, so, so we'll still, this contract excludes phones and internet, so is, is twen- is it twenty-seven thousand? Plus whatever, uh, phones and internet are gonna be when we move to the new building?
Yeah, and the custodial costs were about nineteen thousand dollars for the custodial, so they would be covering it.
But you said eighteen thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
At the old building, are we projecting the same cost of the new building, eighteen?
It's only eighteen thousand.
That's the new building?
Right.
Oh, yeah, well, uh, now that's a good question.
Is it eighteen thousand?
That's a good question, I mean, I have no idea what the, what the, you know, so, yeah, that's a good question, because we are, we would be paying then, but we wouldn't be, I mean, I, I don't know how they're gonna do it, so that's a good question.
Well, I, I, actually.
I don't think it'll be that much, but I mean, yeah, that, that's something we need to, to, to handle.
Um, one of the issues that actually speaks to one of the reasons why we kind of need to know what we're gonna do, we've talked about the phone system, and we're, we're at a point with phones and computers, and you just made a motion on the grants. We're about to get new computers without any match, by the way. Um, and then there's the issue of broadband internet. And some of that, we need to, when you get estimates for this stuff, you know, they're gonna look at the Plaza and what we got now. Uh, but if we're not gonna stay there, then we don't wanna expend that money no more. Uh, but we can't, you know, we really have something to show them to say, give us an estimate of that. So it, you might be able to generally be able to discuss it, but it wouldn't be a real invoice or a real estimate that they would back. You know, because they don't really know what they're dealing with. It would be similar to what we have now, because we're not gonna have computer stations, um, we may even actually have fewer. Uh, there's some telephone issues already that we have to make a decision about, whether we're gonna do Plaza or not Plaza, or the Justice Center. And it's, it's easy to get the estimates on Plaza, it's very difficult to, to really say at the Justice Center right now. Cause it's not, it's not been, you know, it's not been developed yet, they haven't constructed anything, no offices in there.
And, and that, and that's a good point, Don, about the, the telephone, but I, I, I will say that, uh, I don't think there will be that much, that, those numbers that I gave you guys earlier, that those were like a four or five year average cost of we had experienced since, I, I think, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. And since then, uh, Helen, uh, the, the, uh, chief of staff Helen has, uh, renegoti- renegotiated some of the AT&T contracts that we have, and so our actual costs now are lower for us, but you're right, then we don't know what kind of payments that we would be making once we move out.
Mr. Turner, for clarity, uh, this is Andre Valley speaking again, I, I was, that's what, that's the point I was trying to get at earlier, was after the last question cleared than I did, but the question I was trying to see is, you have twenty-seven thousand, but it's not spelled out with, with what all it was. But in addition, I was trying to get the council to make an informed decision related to what are the actual spenders that you still would have that you carried through. So as it relates to your statement, I wanna make sure I heard you correctly. Are you saying that, that we spent eighteen thousand dollars annually between the phone, internet, and all those services? Did I hear you correctly when you said that?
Yeah, that's what the, that's what they're averaging now, this was before, this, I gave you guys this in twenty nineteen, so that was probably, I think, twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Right, so.
Since then, we've, we've renegotiated that cost, it hasn't been that high since then, but those are, those, I think it was fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. The years, those fiscal years that I used that, that data to come up with that, those numbers.
Okay, so the follow-up question, the twenty-seven thousand, you're saying that we're spending currently in the facility, was that included in the twenty-seven thousand, or was that in addition to twenty-seven thousand when you gave the projection in, in nineteen eighty's Plaza? Is included in the twenty-seven thousand?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so when we, new contract, well, we're looking at twenty-seven thousand plus eighteen thousand.
Well, we don't, no.
We, we don't know, that was a good question.
It's, it's probably less.
I don't think, yeah, I just can't imagine paying eighteen thousand dollars, yeah, but that's something we need to look into.
But what I'm saying, as the contract is written, you currently, what you're telling us is, it's twenty-seven thousand we're spending now, or includes phone, phone as well as utilities? Under this contract.
Those were numbers that were prior to our renegotiating that contract with AT&T, those were for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
So in other words.
I use actual, I use actual numbers from sixteen, actual payments from the year sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen to, to do those, uh, projections.
Correct, and so with the, with the formal projections, what you're saying is that eighteen thousand of the twenty-seven thousand with phone and internet was specifically excluded from this contract? So we're looking at twenty-seven thousand utilities, plus whatever our current phone would be once we move to the justice complex, call, phone, internet, and et cetera.
We're looking at twenty-seven thousand plus whatever telephone cost would be at the complex. I don't know if they're twenty, uh, eighteen thousand dollars. We'll be looking at twenty-seven thousand dollars plus whatever the phone cost would be out there. Just because we pay eighteen thousand dollars, that doesn't mean that's what we're gonna pay out there, but that's something we need to look into, need to kind of, try to get an idea of what that number would be.
Okay.
I have a question.
Ms. Wanda.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not understanding. Are you saying, and I think this is what Mr. Valley's trying to ask also, are we paying eighteen thousand dollars for phone bill currently? Plus the twenty-seven thousand dollars a year for utilities, or is the eighteen thousand dollars included in the twenty-seven thousand?
It's not included.
Then what twenty-seven thousand?
Twenty-seven thousand that you said pay for utilities presently, twenty-seven.
That's equal.
The, okay, those, it's not what we're paying presently, those were all, those were numbers that we were paying, that we had actually paid, those were actual costs that we paid in the year sixteen, twenty sixteen, seventeen, twenty eighteen, so.
Did that include phone, that's the point, does that include phone?
Yes, the twenty-seven, for those years, includes the phone.
Okay, so what about nineteen, was, how much was it with the phone in nineteen?
Uh, I don't have, I don't have nineteen's numbers in front of me.
I, I already told you it was less.
I mean, I, I can find, yeah, I, I don't know.
That's, listen, it's not gonna be less if we're only paying like twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, including the phone, if we move to a uti- me to a place where we're gonna pay twenty-seven thousand dollars a year excluding the phone.
Yeah, but like I said, we're done with saying that, how do we know how much we're gonna pay in telephone? I agree with him, we don't know how much, so it's gonna be twenty-seven plus whatever the telephone bill is, so we kind of need to.
That's what I mean.
Anyway.
Yeah, but I mean, but we would be saving the twenty-something thousand dollars on the, uh, housekeeping costs, so the, that's, the, the, those costs that we wouldn't have to, to incur anymore.
So it's still, it's still a net savings.
But, 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 but here, here's the practical thing, I don't know how it's a net savings if, okay, if we take the twenty eighteen numbers that Mr. Turner has given us, and you're saying the twenty-seven thousand dollars that we'll be paying in the justice complex contract, uh, the, the phone is not included in the same twenty-seven thousand you gave us. Currently, we have a fixed number, which is, under the two thousand eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, we were only spending nine thousand dollars annually, according to your projection, we spent eighteen on phone. If we take eighteen from twenty-seven, uh, that's nine thousand dollars, right? That's what we were paying in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen for all utilities, uh, according to what Mr. Turner is saying. And you're saying we're paying less than that now, because the eighteen is less than what it was.
Let me, let me interject, let, let me interject something, because I think, I think we're getting a little off this script here about the whole thing. You're not counting, the total savings includes the cleaning, upkeep, light, lights, maintenance, all the stuff that we're doing.
That was excluded, we weren't talking about that, that excluded, that was fifty-three.
No, 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 no.
That was excluded, we're talking about the apples to apples, the twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
That's what I'm trying to say, apples to apples for the twenty-seven thousand dollar lease includes not just the square feet and the utilities besides the phone and internet, but it also includes the upkeep and the cleaning. So, I mean, if you, you gotta look at all the things that twenty-seven thousand for the lease includes, not just what it excludes. If you're gonna do apples to apples, you gotta look at what we're paying for those things now. And just to, you know, the, the cleaning alone is gonna save us how much?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand dollars a year just on cleaning, so you, you gotta consider that, and that twenty-seven thousand lease payment also. So, uh, and I, I mean, frankly, I actually feel better about having control over the phones and the internet, uh, rather than having our landlord be over it, because those issues are very important to nine-one-one, can you hear me?
I would suggest that they be over the phone, internet, but what Mr. Turner just said, and you just said, was, was this. So you're saving twenty-one, uh, those numbers together be twenty-one is what he, what he, what he's saying, it seemed to me you only have a three thousand dollar sum gain.
I mean, when you talk about taxpayers' money, I think three thousand dollars is worth saving, I mean, I'd rather pay less than more. And then you get a better building, you know, updated building, you don't have all the property issues that you have with a current building.
I understand with three thousand dollars, but we haven't cap- calculated how much the moving costs are at all, those things.
Moving costs, the, the moving costs aren't gonna be every year, the moving costs are gonna be one year.
I understand.
You know, I'm not sure how much the movie costs are gonna be, I mean, I really don't, I'm not sure, because we have, we have labor and people who can help with moving, uh, we're not.
The moving cost won't be thirty thousand.
I, I don't think it's gonna be that snippy, but we have a lot on our agenda, so let me ask, are there any other questions, uh, Ms. Ford, Mr. St. Clamia, or Christopher, or anybody?
But those things we can look into, definitely, it just adds to the mention, the, the, the telephone, we can look into that, and then any other other issues that we're discussing, we can discuss that with Ms. Boyd.
Well, I, my feeling about it honestly is, we could, if, 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 if you wanted to get forward tonight, then we can, we can change the wording in this lease to include electricity and gas, and that nine-one-one is not to be included in the agreement. Those are two very simple fixes, the rest of it has more to do with Plaza building. And can you look at the water department building and the fact that we have our investigators over there, uh, we're running out of space, the cost of the water department building itself. If you look at the issues Chris raised about, uh, what the water department should be paying us anyway, I really think the issue is more about, I mean, we know we're gonna save money ultimately on, on this move. Um, I think the issue is whether you wanna do it or not, really. That's, that's my question. So anybody, Mr. St. Clemmie, I think you wanted to, to speak.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could have the floor for just a moment, I, I've sat here and listened to all the pros and cons of this entire thing. I think it's a win-win situation for us all, because when we move out of where, for the health and welfare of our police department, for the health and welfare of our people, uh, moving out of that building that we're in, we need to move, uh, there's no question about that. And I think it's a win-win situation by moving out there to this new building. And we will take the old building, I think in future years, and fix it up and rent it out, uh, we could lease it to someone else. We, it doesn't necessarily have to be a, a ci- city, uh, entity, but a business, we could lease it to someone else that might wanna rent it. But we'll have a building that we can do something with, but we need to fix that building up that we're in because of, uh, some of the problems we've got out there. And if we're gonna fix it up for our fire department, that would be their thing, or the water company, whoever. But that is a, uh, uh, could be an income for us in time. But I think personally, uh, looking at all this, I think it's a win-win situation. Uh, I think the rent, uh, and we're gonna save money over the years, so my feeling about this is that, uh, we need to go move forward on the, uh, interlocal agreement and go forward with it and move out there. That's my, uh, opinion, and thank you very much, sir.
Okay, um, at this point, I'm gonna just, um, say that Ms. Sandy just advised me, and Andre, you're not here sitting next to me, so I don't have your ear, as I usually do, but all we need is a, a motion, um, let me just say it this way, a motion to adopt it requires a motion from the council and the second, obviously, a vote. Um, I know, I'm, I know it would need to include new language for electricity and gas in the nine-one-one system, not included as part of this lease agreement.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll make that.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, if we move forward on this, uh, agreement and, uh, make the necessary changes that we need to make to, uh, move forward with, that's my motion.
And, and those changes would be, as stated, to change the energy to, uh, electricity and gas, and that the nine-one-one system not be included in this agreement. Okay, motion has been made, is there a second? Is there a second to adopt the interlocal agreement regarding the justice complex? One was, okay, make sure you've unmuted your phone if you did, if you want. Not hearing a second, I'm gonna say the motion to pass for lack of a second. Okay, so.
If, if I, if I made me, one thing I wanna say to the group, my statement tonight is not that I'm opposed to this at all, I'm not. I just want to tighten the language up, if you all wanna vote for, we can clear up this language with those caveats, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to the agreement, I don't wanna get you all in the impression. Uh, I just wanna make sure that. Uh, I just wanna make sure that-
Could you give us-
I would like to clear up the language first and then, um, get, uh, get something in writing as far as the utilities, utilities, the figures first before we, before I vote.
I agree with that.
Don't we meet next week?
We could bring it back up.
Yeah, we miss, I mean, we meet April the seventh. April seventh is when we, um, Andre.
Yes.
Would you agree to get, uh, with Amy in time for this, uh, interlocal agreement?
Next week's meeting, yeah.
For?
For next week's meeting, yeah.
For the April seventh meeting, and-
So that's, the seventh, the seventh is next Tuesday.
So, uh, can you, can you get us a revised, get with Amy and get a revised interlocal agreement per the direction of the council?
Yes, yes, we'll, we'll-
All right.
Council by Friday.
Well, I know we spent a lot of time on that, but we've also been talking about it for months, and we needed at least to get past that. So, um, we'll put it back on the agenda for April the seventh. And, uh, I look forward to seeing the revised interlocal agreement and the information that was requested on the utilities, I think. Uh, okay, if no, no objection, we'll move on to the next issue. And I'm sorry, I know it's getting late, but we, we do have a lot of issues pressing, so. I hope being at home or your office or wherever you are makes it a little easier to endure. Uh, the next issue is the new lease finance agreement with Caterpillar regarding equipment for the landfill, Mr. Turner? I got you on the agenda for that.
Well, we have, we have two those that go down at the landfill, and these those, I didn't realize when I got here. Uh, fifteen, and then we had just got those those, but I didn't realize they were even, and so we purchased them in fifteen, as usual, we purchased them, they had way over five hundred hours a piece. They're both not working right now, right there, okay?
Uh, we have one that it's costing us too much money, I think Mr. Turner and I are both great. It's costing an extravagant amount of money to keep it going, it's on its last leg, it's way past the hours that needs to be, um, it, it's machines on its last leg basically. And it's costing us a lot of money just to let it go for another few days, maybe a week at a time, and we're spending way more money than we should be.
And then the repair costs are getting, you know, pretty high. And so, uh, the actual payments, I don't have the numbers in front of me right now. What would be, I understand that, man, that.
Uh, yeah, that's right.
No, well, one of them was.
But they gave us trading value credit?
No, I mean, what, what would be? He had, I don't have the numbers.
Can y'all see there?
This, this is important, okay, remember what I did. We currently pay about, we pay five thousand dollars for those about, I think, uh, those for two new those, and so that would ask for, you know, the new those and the other new.
The one is gonna be sixty two hundred, the other one thirty five hundred.
So about nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And so we pay, so we get about four thousand dollars more, and I take those, uh, costs over the next five years, it would be offset by the, the repair costs and that, this those, so. Uh, I know in the last year revenue can, with those, the, um, the, uh, repair costs, the one to pay for the increase of the, uh, lease pay. And so that's, 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 now they really need, it needs to be those. I mean, there, there's no way that, uh, they, they repair them, but they, they're not fixed. And so they prepare long enough to last maybe a week or two, and then they get in the, the garbage and they get caught up in them and some dust breaks down, and it comes with it. And so, uh, these those is actually have, have been built for the last year, they have a certain other characteristics on the land, on the equipment. And, uh, by that many things, just give them something so they can keep the, the, with, Andre knows that they, they have a certain level of the, that the, uh, rubber needs to be, they have to, what do you call it, uh, the elevation, certain elevation, elevation that they have to have, these those are accrue state. And they, and they're using the, the space to, uh, capacity. And so right now they just don't have that, but, but they have one, but the repair costs are just exorbitant, so. I, I would suggest getting some, some more, uh, those, and this, they did, I don't think that's it.
All right.
Yeah, this is, we don't see that.
But it's under state contract, but we also did get estimates from Power Equipment, which is who has been probably the provider here for a, a long time. Uh, that, that we, we wanted to get somebody else, and we got Riggs Caterpillar out of Jonesboro made estimates. Uh, they had a better package than Power Equipment, and also, uh, finance agreement and all the rest of it. Sorry.
But we have been pre-approved by Caterpillar to, to get those, and they're giving us about twenty thousand dollars on the trade here, also. So they give us twenty thousand dollars credit.
Yeah.
Financially.
I probably should notify you, if I was you, my phone, my power, my phone's going down.
And, uh, this, I'm not, I wanna vote too, this gonna be maintenance.
Yes, the maintenance agreement, so we won't have those weekly, I don't know if y'all see them when you get your check registers, but, um, we, we're making an awful lot of maintenance con, payments to Power Equipment, uh, we won't have those anymore.
And then it's included in the financing side, so that, that's why it's a little bit more of a maintenance, uh, cost like to maintenance contract is included in it.
Uh, that, I guess to add to that, Andre, the wet weather road, uh, basically, if you can imagine, you know, uh, track hoe has been having to make up for not having adequate dozers. A track hoe can't keep up with the garbage, and it's even threatening now our wet weather road, which is part of the reason we were able to get back St. Francis County and Forest City. Uh, or why, why they could no longer not bring it to us, um, anyway. And in addition to that, uh, the, the, the landfill we have not closed yet, we still need dozers to use, and we have to push that garbage uh, down and to take new garbage, including our own city's garbage. All of that's been compromised, because most of the time they're having to use one track hoe, because the dozer's down, and we pay something like five thousand dollars a week to let it go for a few more days. It's an absolute disaster. Uh, this is, uh, this is something that, that I feel, that I think we all feel is very important. My phone, my phone's on twenty percent, so.
This is one, yeah. My question is, why are we just hearing about this? Every time something with the landfill is emergency, it has to happen immediately. If you've been paying five thousand dollars of, a, a week, or every other week, we should have been heard about this a long time ago.
Well, I, I think we have talked about it, um, I wouldn't, that we definitely talked about the situation with the landfill and the dozers. We just haven't had the, um, the estimates or the proposals or the bids before we, until now. And that's true, but, um, but we have definitely talked about the problems out there with these dozers, we've talked about that many times. We just haven't had an option for you to act on until tonight, as far as, you know, what you can do about it. So as far as, we, we, we'd have had this ready for two weeks ago, um, but we didn't need.
Then, uh, another thing is that they, I, I, well, you know, I can't speak for Bob, so I, I don't, actually, I really don't wanna try. But I think that it just got to the point where we just knew the cost of the repair costs. And that, and that's how I felt like the last couple of, of last month, basically, with the repair costs were just getting too high. Uh, these are things that just, we're fixing something, it's not, we're repairing something, it's not good.
And I'm gonna actually quote Derek, if it's all right, Derek. I don't wanna write another check to Power Equipment. And, um, and I think Sandy and I agree with Derek about that. So it, this is not, I wanna be clear, this is not something that, this is urgency, or if you hear that in our voice, is more from the administration and not from, it's definitely, the landfill agrees with it, that's for sure.
I mean, actually, what I said was I wouldn't know if Sandy would, and that, that'll, that'll-
They'll sign another checks, that's, I heard write a check, but, yeah, he wouldn't sign another check to Power Equipment, and Sandy and I feel the same way. It's just been bleeding the landfill, and we still haven't, you know, gotten to a point where we've gotten, made whole from the money that we lost before they've started bringing that, uh, trash back, waste foot back, so. Anyway, in, any other questions? Uh, my phone's on twenty percent, and I'm starting to get worried. Any more questions? I don't have a charger with me.
What are you asking, Mr. St. Columbia, what are you asking of us tonight, uh?
Well, we would, uh, ask you to approve, uh, uh, this, entering this agreement with Caterpillar Finance on the purchase of the two dozers and the credit on the two existing, uh, uh, Komatsu dozers. Uh, so that we can, and it's one new dozer and one used dozer. Uh, so that we can commence that, it'll take them about two weeks to a month. And so a, a real crisis would be two weeks, a month from now. Um, we, we could probably make it, we might have a few more power equipment checks Derek won't wanna sign to get there. But it's still gonna take us two weeks to, a month before they're delivered if we act tonight.
Yeah, well, I mean, the equipment is, that we have is falling apart, so we need to make, we need to move forward on this. If we're gonna stay in business out.
Basically, we're spending more money on, on fixing dozers than we, ultimately than we would on these dozers. So we actually will save money because we're spending too much money on maintenance for the Komatsus. So really, this is safest money, I mean, and ultimately. And we don't have, we, we don't have much option, we got ourselves to this point, I guess. The, the St. Francis County landfill issue, or them, them, sorry, them not bringing the trash or landfill certainly delayed some of these questions as well, so. Anyway, any other questions, uh, action by the council? On the new lease finance agreement with Caterpillar? Riggs Caterpillar? Do I hear a motion to approve the new lease finance agreement?
Well, I'll move to, uh, I'll move to adopt the ordinance number, whatever it is, twenty twenty, by placing it on its third and final reading, reading title on.
Mr. Edson?
Yes, sir.
And I also asked at this time, I guess, because the, uh, the twenty twenty budget for the dozers is about five thousand dollars, if you guys approved, the twenty twenty budget is about five thousand. These would cost someone, they would have had that, and that would have to, in that, or that portion, only that portion of twenty twenty budget for the landfill that deals with those dozers and change the, the budget to, 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 to appropriate those.
Can you hear me? I, I don't have any volume. I, I can't hear.
I'm sorry, uh, I had you on mute. Uh, Sandy says that what we need to do tonight is a, a motion to allow us to proceed to finance agreement so that, uh, we can get this ordered. And then Tuesday night we'll have an ordinance from Andre to actually, um, approve the rest of it. That's what Ms. Sandy was telling me. So what we need is a motion to allow the administration to move forward on the finance agreement.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong ordinance. Okay, well, I, I'll, I'll move, some will.
Okay, Mr. Etherly moves, is there a second? Is there a second? Anybody?
Second, last second, yeah.
Miss, I'm not sure who seconded it, it sounded like Joe, um, or Ms. Ford. Okay, uh, Ms.
Okay, Davis? St. Columbia?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Crockett?
Abstain.
Franklin? Etherly?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Franklin? Okay, four, yes, one abstain, one absent.
Motion passes, all right, and we'll get the ordinance, Andre, uh, ready for the seventh, if you're, if you're still on here. Okay, thank you for that, and we'll get that moving, uh, thank you. And this, I'm gonna, I'm going to, um, because of time, if it's, if there's no objection, I'm gonna merge the last three items on the agenda. Uh, and just discuss them at one time. And basically what you have is an emergency hiring order request, and what I'm asking is for your support or endorsement uh, to allow me to hire first responders as needed during this emergency order, which I believe lasts for sixty days unless it's renewed. Anyway, uh, when it comes to police especially, and, uh, there could be other first responders involved. Going through the hiring process, going through the manual is a lengthy process. Uh, there's some positions, uh, that we could fill, and some, uh, immediate things that could be met. So I'm asking for your, uh, endorsement of me to be able to do that, and ask for your input on that. Um, there's also two resolutions, one, and the base pay ordinance combined. One is a resolution of base pay ordinance for an increase in pay rates for department employees. Uh, and the other one is a resolution for the revised twenty twenty budget pay for personnel. Um, what this does is implement, uh, officially, under the normal budget, uh, and base pay process arises for police and fire department uh, for the remainder of this year. And it, it amends both the budget and the base pay accordingly. And so in the interest of time, I wanted to just merge those three, uh, into one discussion and go from there. Okay, any?
I have a question, the emergency, um, request that you're making, what, what is that relative to, I, I'm not sure I understand that.
It's, it's to the COVID nineteen emergency order, public emergency crisis. You know, basically, we have a lot more demands on law enforcement, especially right now. Um, we have, uh, for instance, uh, if what they tell us is gonna happen, happens. Uh, we're gonna have some serious problems at the hospital, they've already asked us to do some planning with them about how to control uh, some of those issues that will require a lot of law enforcement, uh, resources and hours and personnel. We have many, many other issues in government regard, regarding looting and, and things of that nature that people are concerned about. If I use the normal process in the, uh, manual, you have to advertise, you have to take applications, and you, you all know the process. It's a lengthy and time-consuming process, that's even for existing openings that are in the budget now, and base pay ordinance now. I'd like to ask for your endorsement, uh, if I do, if I should see that the emergency requires it, that we, um, make those decisions. And I wouldn't do it without the coordination or in request of the department heads involved either, but, um, and I also would notify the council. Does, does that answer the question?
It answers.
I don't have specific numbers or anything like that, because I don't know what it would require specifically. But the thing that's worrying me the most, uh, is that the, the handbook restricts us on time, and we're not gonna have a lot of time. So.
Do we need a motion on this?
Well, well, here, here's my question, and is, is Andre still?
Yeah.
The, the handbook is adopted by ordinance, so it, it, it is an ordinance.
Right, yeah.
To the extent that we, that we waive portions of it, do we need to have an ordinance that does it? I mean, even if it's temporary. That's just a legal question. That's just a legal question.
Probably so. What, 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 I think what the mayor is doing, here's one thing that, that I think that you all should do relating to this. The, the mayor needs to hire people. I agree with the process, the, the way the process is going and I agree with the circumstances. What's, what's been happening from a practical standpoint is simply this. When they advertise for people, you don't get, don't get the people hired or somebody quits, you had to go back through the process all over again. And I think that's the practical brass tactics he's getting to is that, okay, I need to hire people right now for, for civil service because we're only talking about civil service, police and fire. I need to hire people right now and the process is going to be way too long. I could, I can draft an ordinance, give them a waiver that's consistent with the executive order, if that's what you all, if that's what you all want. But I think the practical thing is I've, I've been in meetings with Mr. Martin and with department heads over the past 18 months. The practical issue is when they hire somebody, then that person either doesn't pass the academy or they quit for whatever reason, go through the whole process again. And we have to do it. Now, I don't know if the mayor is asking for additional people or if he's asking for people within what your current base pay is. I don't know what he's asking for that. But to answer your question succinctly, Don, Mr. Etherly, yeah, I would have to do an ordinance that, that cleans that up. But he's asking for some direction tonight so we can clean it up next week. And he could be in the process of doing what you all give him authority to do now.
I mean, personally.
I'm finished.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not personally opposed to it. I just, I would like to have it in writing. To the extent that it's an ordinance, I would like to, by the same measure. So if we understand what the, the, and I understand your emergency, I don't.
Not me, but.
I think, I think, I think the power on my phone went, just went down 10%. No, I'm up.
That's you, Ms. Crockett.
One of y'all must be cooking. That sound like a blender.
But that would be my request, that we have a, some, some, some short ordinance that allows for the waiver.
Any other comments? Okay, direction? Okay. Before we move on, I heard, I thought, I don't know that. Let's talk about the resolution base pay ordinance for increased pay rates for department employees and the resolution for revised 22. I'm going to ask, is, is it all right, Ms. Turner? If you discuss these two ordinance that are before us, because that would.
I mean, I just definitely put the note in to teach those questions Chief Smith had made from the police department for the last several months. And I just include, I just amended base pay. So I changed those numbers for the police officer. And that's been on the other one.
Mayor, Mayor and Mr. Turner.
Yeah.
Both of y'all mics are off, so, so we're not hearing anything.
Say that one more time.
Both of y'all mics are off, so we're not hearing anything.
He ain't giving nothing.
Yeah, I can't hear nothing.
Okay, uh, yeah. The only change I made, I made to the, to the amended base pay for the police department in one. And so those were for the, the uniformed police officers. And those numbers I changed to the numbers that Chief Smith had been giving us since sometime in 2019. I just put those numbers in the base page and all the other numbers stayed the same. And then I did another ordinance that contained those same changes in addition to changes for the five also that were submitted by Chief Watson. So the notice that you see. Those are the notes that you can see in those base pay ordinances are the notes that were submitted to you guys by Chief Smith and Chief Watson.
So let me, let me ask if anybody has a question for Mr. Turner. Chief Smith's also here. Let, let me say that I would ask that you approve the one for both police and fire. What basically, what I want to do, which we talked about for months now, is to pay for this out of overtime. The overtime budget, by the way, is about to go way up during this crisis. It probably already has because we don't have enough employees in the police department. But once this is approved and we're able to put these people in place, one of the things that Mr. Etherly mentioned, which was to have a gatekeeper, I think it was Mr. Etherly, is that we've identified gatekeepers at each department, not just those two, but all of them actually, so that we could track weekly what the overtime is and report to that by monthly or every council meeting where we are headed. So rather than require a chicken and egg or tail wagging the door situation, I'll just advise you as we go, what's going on with overtime to show you that we are, that we are using that overtime wisely to pay for these positions, promotions of these positions and want to pay. That's the only thing I would say, other than to ask you if there's a motion to adopt the resolution and the base pay ordinance for both fire department and the police department as proposed.
I have one comment.
Sure.
One huge concern. I've always been concerned about what's going to happen when we lose our revenue. But as things stand right now, what's going to happen in terms of revenue? How's the, the already reduced revenue going to be impacted by?
Yeah.
Device.
Good question. It's a real good question and it's a question everybody's asking. What, and Mr. Turner and Sandy and I have all been talking about that same thing. Right now, and y'all interrupt me if, if you disagree, but the thinking, the best thing going on right now is the earliest we'll, we'll see any impact from it probably would be May, possibly as late as June or July. There's been an uptick, tick in some spending, a downtick in other spending. So it depends on how hard this hit, this virus hits. It depends on whether we have any shut in orders in Arkansas where people literally aren't going out. We expect it to be some hit. I think the question is how much and how long? And we won't really have much guidance because we've never, and the league and other people than smarter than me anyway, are saying the same thing. So it is an unknown. And, and I will say that on non-emergency personnel right now, I don't need to sign the executive order or anything. I just, just, but I will let you know that I've decided not to fill any open positions or positions that are open that are not involved in emergency services or unless they're a lateral move that, that is a net revenue neutral move. In other words, if we move one position to another or one person to another or something like that, it didn't make any difference in terms of spending, then we might do that. But otherwise, I'm not going to hire any new positions unless it's emergency personnel for foreseeable future. That is an excellent question, timely question. I hope it answered, I don't know if I answered your question.
Well, I got this question. Since the virus has hit, like it's hit, like people, like the code enforcement, are they still able to work? I mean, have anybody looked at the stimulus package to see, does it cover, you know, small, a small state, small cities like ours? Or to see if there's some kind of relief that we can get? Or if there's some kind of money that first, some of the first responders can get? So by this taking us, will put us over? Is it something that we could apply for or to get to see if we can make sure that we can be okay? Because the stimulus package, has anybody read to see, does it cover first responders? Because I know I saw where the governor had given nurses $1,000 per month and nurses on the front line get $2,000 a month. So that's my concern is have you checked that out to see, like, remember?
Those are also great questions.
Just, just like you had got the money, remember you had got the money for, uh, we did just, they gave you all the grant for saturations and stuff like that? Remember you had that money to deal with overtime?
Yeah, no, you're, and that, that's, those are all good questions, a lot of questions. Chief Smith is just pointing out that grant money, and the answer is yes, there's money in the stimulus package. The question is, when will we be able to get it? Most of it will probably be after the fact and reimbursable type money because it's so, it takes such a long time to get the money to where it needs to be. That's true for small businesses, that's true for unemployment, that's true for all of this money. I think I missed some of that, but, but the short answer is there is some money. It's not like the nurses because, and there's a lot more of it for healthcare practitioners because they know they're going to have a hard, they're trying to get nurses to come back. They're trying to get nurses to stay and not move. We lost a nurse from the hospital this week and went to New Orleans to respond to that crisis because she was getting paid $2,000 extra per week. And so we lost that nurse here. So it's, it's designed to deal with those kind of issues. There is a, the chief showing me Department of Justice supplemental funding grant solicitation that opened today and closes May the 29th. And local units of government, which should be cities, are included in that.
So how much is that? How much is that?
Closes May 29th. Give me a second here. It closes May 29th. So you know you're not going to get that money until we're all, I hope we're almost through this.
Well, let me see. Mr. Franklin, this Chief Smith, it's, it's going to be up to 50, $50,000 to $100,000.
Okay, see, and, and that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. I mean, because I feel like if we are getting something back, then, I mean, whenever we get it, because if we spend the money, at least we'll know we're getting something back. And that's one thing, you know, we gotta let, let our folks know that we applied for this, we're going to get this back. Hey, so we may spend it now, but at least we're letting people know we're applying for things and we, and we're getting some response back. That's my thing. And, you know, I'm glad, Chief Smith, you said it's up to 50, up to $100,000 or $50,000. Whatever the case.
Yeah, starting off between 50 to $100,000 depending on availability. As soon as we can get the, the grant in, as soon as probably we have better chance of getting more revenue and more resources coming in.
Yes, sir. And, and I mean, that's, that's all I'm trying to make sure. I mean, I'm for whatever. I mean, make sure people get what they need to get. That's, that's the only question I have.
Yeah, it's a good question. So much of this is, is they're doing as they go. The stimulus package is real important, did include cities. Like I said, most of it's going to be after the fact. We're just going to have to keep our records, make sure we apply for it and so forth.
Hey, Mayor, I got this question, I got this question for you, Mayor. I, I got off the coffee just a minute. But like, I see where you had the, you did a state of emergency with the county. Uh, we, I mean, when you did that, no one, I knew I didn't know. It is just that if we all going to be together on certain things, make sure we're all in, you know, in the loop. I know when you called this meeting, none of the city council were there. I, I'm, I'm just saying, we need to show that we're a team. Miss Ford has always pointed that out, that when we do stuff, hey, let it be as, like, we all do this together. Just like you just gave us the thing of the state of the city. Well, it was, I just got mine tonight, but sent up time to look over to say, hey, I mean, I'm going to this. But, you know, when you do things, put us all together. If you can't put us all together, at least in an email or a text message, look, if you're all available, I'm here doing this with the, with the health department, UAMS, the hospital. I mean, we need to know together because I was at a loss. I saw someone posting on Facebook that you had did something like that. And I'm like, man, I wish I'd have known. And when people ask us questions about it, we, I, we're, we're lost. And that's just me.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm.
I said earlier that I hope this Zoom thing will help make you care for you better. I should have sent that, if we did not, we should have sent that email out to you all about the emergency. You know, we were so, working so hard to make sure we had the public health people and the emergency responders and all those kind of folks involved in it that, that we didn't stop long enough. I get, apparently we didn't stop long enough to send that out to the council. So my apologies for that and we'll try to do better is all I can say. But, but I don't, I don't disagree with you. And I hope the Zoom applications will get more familiar with it. We can use that over the next few weeks and we'll try to get that, the stuff emailed to you more than we have. But that was a pretty hectic couple of days. So my apologies if that got overlooked. It shouldn't have been. So, anyway, going back to the resolution base pay ordinance for the increased pay rates for employees, any other questions on that or discussion? Okay. So what we would need, I think I've got the direction I need on the emergency hiring order. Got the input from you. What I need on the, the resolution base pay ordinance is a motion and a second. Turn on your mic, I think.
Yeah. Joe St. Columbia, I'll move.
Second.
Okay, Mr. St. Columbia moves and Mr. Franklin seconds the resolution base pay ordinance for increased pay rates for department employees as in your packet. What ordinance number? Ordinance number three. Okay, call, I want to make sure everybody has ordinance number three.
Page on third and final reading.
Let's call the roll on that.
Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Etherly?
No.
You might go to sleep.
I have a question.
Maybe it's the immediate.
Miss Crockett, Miss Ford?
Ford, if you may, we know you.
Okay.
No. Ford abstain.
Okay, Miss Crockett?
No.
Oh, no, okay.
Smith votes yes.
So it's three yes. And Smith votes yes, be four yes. Okay.
Motion passes, put on third and final reading. And now I need a motion for adoption, ordinance number three.
I still move, Joe St.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, is there a second? Okay, this is a motion for adoption, ordinance number three for fire and police salaries. Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Franklin? Okay, motion does for a second. Second. Okay. Well, so it's put on third and final reading, but no final adoption. So with that, then that leaves us, ordinance number four, I actually don't think that made the agenda, but it did make in your packet. And what this is, I'm ask, to explain this.
A couple of meetings ago, you passed invoices for the water and sewer department that exceeded the mayor's spending limit, one for pumps and one for valves. This is an ordinance the city attorney drew up to weigh bidding. Didn't y'all approve those invoices? It's just a paper of finance. So it'd be ordinance number four.
Okay, so now that it's been explained, is there a motion on ordinance number four?
I move to adopt ordinance number four, placing on third and final reading, reading the title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Wanda. Okay, call the roll.
David?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
My call dropped. I was over by the hospital, so Tennessee, where we voting?
You're voting to approve the ordinance, the waive bidding on those, the water and sewer pump and valve you approved two meetings ago.
Yes, yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes. Is there a motion, put it on final? Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
Adopt ordinance number four, I'm sorry.
Yes.
For final reading.
I so moved, Joe St.
Joe St. Columbia moves, final adoption of ordinance number four. Is there a second?
Second.
Who made that?
Don.
Don? Okay, call the roll.
Etherly? Forward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Frank Columbia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, before we adjourn, Chris, when I, we had a something I don't think I've seen since I've been here, anyway. We had the ordinance on pay raises for fire and police that you made a second to that was approved, and then we did it for final adoption and there was a motion that died for a lack of a second. Did you wanna, you want us to revisit that now that you're back? Chris? Chris, are you there?
Oh, I was saying, I was, I was sorry, my call had dropped.
Okay, hello? Chris, are you there? All right, good one, Watts. Chris, are you here? Chris Franklin? All right, Chris, we're losing you. Are you back? All right. But, and we'll try one more time, Chris, you don't seem, all right. So I'm assuming we've lost Chris Franklin, and so we won't go back to ordinance number three unless anybody else wants to. Okay, all right, well, we'll revisit that, I guess, you know, I have some back on the agenda, for final adoption. And in the meantime, Andre, you and I will get together on this emergency Okay, can we get together tomorrow?
Um, yeah.
All right.
Wait, wait, as a technical matter, Madam Clerk, I don't have an ordinance in front of me that you all adopted. We didn't read the title. Could you put the record, read the title, because I'm not trying to be we voted to read the title, but we didn't read the title.
Okay. An ordinance waiving competitive bidding in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated section fourteen fifty-eight three oh three, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to repair a certain property for the city of Helena, West Helena, for other related purposes.
Thank you. I'm not trying to be hypothetical, I wanted to make sure we had it passed.
All right, is there a motion? If no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Monica's second to motion to adjourn. If no objection, we'll adjourn. Helen, you can turn us off if you're still there. Thank y'all for participating in this definitely unique council meeting, and we appreciate you hanging in there until almost nine o'clock. Thank you very much. Good night.
Night.
Good night.